Okay. What are you writing that all about? Okay.
Yeah, they reached out to us and uh.
When you play more?
Yeah, yeah. Whenever you're ready, I'm serious, for sure. Oh, yeah. We gotta, we gotta. Or when they come in, they can just.
Alright, so ready to roll?
Yes, sir.
Alright, well, I'm taking a hard bit, got it just right, and I'd like to welcome all of you all. Rob Van, Superman, gathering me with River Street's on a boat, they're also on a boat, another one here. And this is gonna be their thing, they've brought the entire team, I'd like to introduce Eric Kramer. He is the president and CEO of Wilkes Communication. That is the, I don't know if it's gonna work for us, they have, that's the most, we have River Street Networks. Cooperative, which we think is a very, very fine feature for the organization, we select a particular project and they have. Dave Woodford, our planner, he'll be here, he'll be somebody that might wanna call if you've got questions after today. That'd be a good point, he'll make the, may have any questions concerning comments you had to River Street folks. I'll turn it over to Eric and uh. Eric?
Thank you, appreciate the contribution, I appreciate you guys selecting us for this process. It's been a, how long, maybe six, seven months. So thank you for your trust in us, based on us selecting us for this project, we're very excited about it. We're gonna tell you, okay, so look at our company, what we do, how we do it, what our plans are here, and hopefully get a lot out of that. If you have questions, just raise your hand, we can stop, I'll answer any of them. There's no back, but anything's on the table. Before I get started, I want you to introduce the people I have in the room, and this is basically our team that has been working on rural broadband projects like this for years, so we'll just start from there.
Hi, I'm Greg Coltrane, I'm vice president of business development, and I've been working in this arena for about the last twenty-five years.
Rob Taylor, I'm a business thought manager here in the state of Virginia, and I've been working in this market for about twenty-three years.
Jerry Sevitt, last person in the work engineering, I've been in the industry for twenty-five years.
Joshua Strickland, I'm the wireless business manager, and I've been in the industry for around twenty-three years.
I'm Jimmy Colton, technology officer, I've been in the industry since nineteen ninety-six, ninety-five.
I'm Eric Kramer, I've been in the industry since nineteen ninety-six, I was a consultant for eight years, working on a small rural telecom company, starting a hundred. I came to Wilkes in two thousand five, about to go for two thousand ten. In two thousand five, we had one of the best copper networks out there, great from DSL, those writings on the wall that kind of knew that the world was changing. And so we started a fiber home project, and we finished that in two thousand fourteen. And so that's really why we're here today, is to kind of talk about what we've done in Wilkes, and then how we took that model and created River Street for opportunities like this, okay? So we're trying to just replicate what we've done in Wilkes County, Wilkes County, North Carolina, that's where we're from. It's up in the northwest corner of North Carolina, we've been around for a while. But we're gonna talk about this model, to kind of show you what we wanna do, and this is a wireless project. We've traditionally been a wireline telephone company, we're now a fiber of the home gigabit broadband. And so we've really transformed ourselves, so I'm gonna talk about that now. So we are a little telephone management corporation, we are member-owned, so we're part of, in state of North Carolina, you have phone cooperatives and you have like a block. We have those in Virginia, okay? We've been around for sixty-eight years, eighty-five employees, as I mentioned, we had all fiber of the home gigabit, everybody know what gigabit means? That's a gigabit. So on copper, you have something called DSL, you've got something called DUB, on lottery, you have certain speeds. And so here, the lowest speed we offer in our network is twenty-five and out three up, okay? That's what the FCC says the definition for. That definition changed last year, it was four in one, then it went to ten in one, okay? You need at least twenty-five and three to just kind of function on the internet and watch TV, if that makes sense? So that's sort of the minimum you really need now, okay? So if you don't have twenty-five and three to network, and most copper networks can't do this, then you're really kind of on, alright? And so what's going on in our country right now, we have a lot of places where the current companies have not invested in the network, and they've basically said, this is too expensive to do fiber. We're gonna, we're just not gonna do it, especially the larger companies, okay? Here you have TDS, we're very familiar with TDS, I'll talk about that, but it's copper-based network, it needs to be upgraded. You know that, if you're on the network. What we're talking about doing here is spot it as wireless, it gets twenty-five and three, or fifty and three, where we can do it. But eventually, look at a long-term bridge, it gets fiber, okay? So that's what we're talking about here. We've done it in Wilkes, and so we completely built our rural network, it's in, this kind of runs up to the mountains, the Blue Ridge Parkway, it is very rural, okay? We have three customers per round. And that network cost about forty-four million dollars, we received stimulus funding for about fifteen point six million dollars, that's how we finished that network. That's what got us in those rural parts of our county, okay? It doesn't matter who you are, if you're out in the middle of nowhere, you've got access to internet, that's as good as you get. Downtown Richmond, Washington DC, everywhere, in rural Wilkes County. That's where we're trying to replicate that in all these other places, I'll show you that, okay? So we've been a lot of the worst. This is where we are in North Carolina, that's our co-op, it's like a donut. The reason why it's a donut, is the middle of that is a cable company, okay? So everyone in that donut has four hundred meg, access to really high-speed internet. That company, and the telephone company in the middle of that donut, they didn't wanna build out to the rural farms in the areas, so that's how our co-op happened. Farmers and businessmen got together, back in nineteen fifty-one, and they took out a loan from the NCREA, okay? And that's how, that's how we built our electric and telephone networks, was low-interest loans and grants we documented back in nineteen fifty-one. We had come full circle, the reason why our co-op got started is because these large companies wouldn't do it, they weren't on the people, wasn't a business case. You've got stock-traded companies, they only care about the bottom line, they're behold of Wall Street, we are not, we're a nonprofit, okay? We run everything like our co-op, okay, that's a nonprofit. Everything we make goes back into our network, but it won't work, okay? So whatever, every dollar we make here is not gonna go back to Wilkes, it's gonna go back into this network to expand it and upgrade, does that make sense? And then, you take it a step even further, we invest in local community, we invest in nonprofits, sponsorship programs, we have a whole model that we set up to invest in. We look at ourselves as a part, we think broadband is utility, okay? It should be something that everyone has, like water, electricity, broadband is like digitalized, I think everyone should have access to it, at least in the state. So this is what we did in Wilkes. There's, we're right back, when I say we've come full circle, while we got started with the phone service, right now, people, there's so many places we want broadband, okay? And so, there's all these places that are being left behind, it says copper bond, I think is the best way to solve this problem, that's what we're replicating, okay? There's all kinds of funding resources out here, federal programs, just like there was back in nineteen fifty-one, we found that, we successfully get it. And so that's what we're planning on doing, is this thing type of thing. As a co-op, there's eight co-ops in North Carolina, we merged with one, called Tri-County, it's on the Outer Banks, so now there's seven. The reason why we did that merger is because we were just stronger together, made more sense. If you look at a map of where there's fiber in North Carolina, of two last mile customers in rural areas, they've almost duplicated this hub. So all these other areas, these large paths are, they didn't invest in it, they basically walked away from the network, they laid off all their staff. They basically said, we can't make this work, sorry. The FCC says is, alright, you, they don't wanna upgrade your network, look at satellite, have you guys seen satellite internet? It's very expensive, it's cash, doesn't really work that well, okay? It's not really an option, it's kind of saying that, tough one, alright? So we view this as an opportunity. So what's our mission? Our mission is what it has always been, provide access to customer service that value a lot for customers, that's just standard for any business. What our mission is for River Street, is to really get back to our roots, so let's go back and serve the unserved, okay? Mission accomplished in Wilkes, everyone served, what does that mean, serving unserved? So we created this River Street Networks entity, really as a statewide traditional broadband cooperative. If most cooperatives stay where they traditionally have been, we mute ourselves and say, why don't you, why stay in our traditional boundaries, let's go apart. And so, let's go anywhere where someone is unserved, so what's unserved? If you don't have twenty-five and three, that means you don't have service, it's insufficient. Underserved us is if you don't have a hundred meg up and a hundred meg down. That's what we think everyone should have, at seventy-five dollars, and that should include everything, okay? No contract, no installation fees, you can have your phone service now if you want, you can keep your number if you want it, you don't like the service, cancel it, we're not gonna call you. That's how we run our co-op, okay? Let me know a little bit. But, what we're, what we see in rural areas, we're a rural company, we serve rural customers, we know rural, that's what we do, okay? We want people within River Street, and then we're broadband, and we're within River Street, okay? That's what, that's what we are, it's our DNA, we sleep in bridges, so. There's broadband accessibility, meaning that people can't get it, but they also can't afford it. So one, we wanna try to get to the service, and two, make it affordable. If you don't have anything, wireless is the best way to get it to you as efficiently and as fast as possible. Our goal is to get you fiber, we can make that happen, okay? And what we do, we look at grants to get that done, alright? So River Street, River Street's been around since two thousand and fourteen, it's an extension of our co-op, it's run just like our co-op. River, the River Street name is actually the address, the street or headquarters, that's how it came up, it went round and round, that's how it was called. We have seventy-seven employees, and really what this is, is a way to expand on our current network, we bought other copper companies. We actually bought three of TDS copper companies in North Carolina. We wanted to buy this, I actually drove up here, and we had a right of course refusal on TDS's property here. I was very impressed with Eric, it's so close to Richmond, it's so rural, you never know, you know what I mean, this is a really neat place. And so, we're very familiar with TDS, their networks, we were over fifty percent fiber of the home, over built with two of the properties. We just wanted two million dollar USDA grant to overbuild that one. And so, when we bought those, we had a commitment to say, we're gonna save these copper networks and make them just like we did Wilkes, and that's where we're at. So we're just on talk to talk, we're walking to walk, okay? This is our network as of September thirtieth, so there's three TDS properties to be purchased, just like the one here, Barnesville, Saluda, Fairbrook. They're copper networks, I think, just about every customer could not get to anyone, is that true, say? They were getting three in one, and six in one.
They're selling to twelve.
Yeah, selling them to twelve and two, and so when they were overselling, these people were paying anywhere eighty, eighty dollars for three in one, they're getting ripped off. First thing we did was lower the pricing, fix it that way, okay? And a lot of explaining to do, okay? And we were like wondering, scratching, we're like, what we got ourselves into here? But it's working out, okay? But these things take a long time, alright? We've got four million dollars for both these properties up and downs, that's over fifty percent done. We had two loan applications for two of the other properties, like I said, we just wanted two million dollar grant, USDA program. We merged the company on the coast, we acquired two companies in Virginia last year, one in Pittsburgh County, okay, a copper-based network, we're gonna overbuild that. We purchased a company that's headquartered in Danville, Virginia, that company got built a wireless network for the entire King and Queen County footprint, okay? So that, that network is tenderly, it's a, yeah, it's a wireless network, that's about eight years old, they can only do about four in one, six in one. And so that wireless network needs to be upgraded, wireless technology has improved from that. And so, we went to them and said, are we gonna upgrade this network to do what we're doing here? Are we gonna go after fiber? So we went on auction, we got thirty-three million dollars of federal funding to go to nine counties in Virginia. Five million of those in that area, the counties committed to give us three point eight billion, and then we're going after other federal funding to complete fiber home, build King and Queen County. That's a very rural county, you've ever been there, thirty-five hundred acres, but they're gonna have to, they are in there, we wanted to look just like Wilkes, okay? So this is kind of our footprint, we purchased a hundred-year-old telephone company here in Ellerby, North Carolina, and they have a wireless network around their area, right there. And so, we've gone from visiting Wilkes to pretty, pretty rural footprint. As of October, this is where we're at. Now this map is kind of, this screen is not showing my map, it's actually a little off, but we purchased this company out here in Murphy, North Carolina, it's wireless. We purchased, North Carolina Wireless is in Hickory, they have a network here in Percy County, and then another, a little wireless mountain company here. And so this is our network as of October, okay? We made a concerted effort to say, listen, how are we gonna do this, I'm gonna solve this problem, I mentioned before, wireless is inefficient, you can do that. We were a wireline company, wireless was not even on our radar, we were like fiber, fiber, fiber. The problem is, is we're going to a bunch of counties, and we're doing this called engineering studies, do they wanna be on fiber, what's the cost? Alright, well, we did a number of these, and it turned out that the average cost to do fiber is thirty percent, past everybody, thirty percent taken. Anywhere thirty-five, forty-five. I don't know about you guys, you have thirty-five to forty-five million dollars laying around in?
No, sir.
And so, that's a, that's a wake-up call. So we ultimately started doing wireless studies as well, and so, to accomplish the same thing for twenty-five and three, it's about sixteen, seventeen, okay? So, it's a bridge to get to where we want to, if that makes sense? So that's what we're doing here, okay? But our end game is really to get the fiber, we're not promising to be fiber today, we're just saying, hey, we're working on this project, this is kind of a little. This is the wireless, the wireless part of the wireless network right here, and so, the reason why we acquired these wireless companies was to get expertise. We didn't know a lot about it, we felt we picked up some really good companies that are in the room, and they're really helping us do this. So we've already won, I think, close to at least six and a half, eight million dollars in grants on wireless projects just like this. So we won one in Patrick County, okay, Virginia, that was, this one here was about three point four million dollars, we had, I'll talk to you about that. This is a big deal, we don't really see grants of this size in original, and so the commitment from just the counties to do this was attractive to us, and it's a great way to get from the start. We're purchasing free cable companies, one of these is out in the Outer Banks, so we're all the way from Murphy, North Carolina, out to the Outer Banks. And we are in the process of acquiring another company in Virginia, another one in North Carolina, and so you see we're pretty far straight out, I apologize for that. That's our network, we've grown significantly since two thousand and fourteen. This is this particular region, and so what you see in this map is, we worked in the county to build a fiber of the home, complete fiber of the home network, we built a back home. We did that network, I think, four years, and so we passed about fifty-five hundred customers, we just, we just have a school system, the county government, the hospital. Right now, we're cutting people over, probably ten, ten a month, and that's fiber of the home. And they put in one point eight million dollars, we put in five point five, and that's when you realize, these are, this is expensive, right? Wireless is the way to do this. So, this is a wireless project in Percy County, wireless project in Patrick County, this is the footprint of the two counties, where it's barely in, Dinwiddie. This is a copper company we purchased, this is a fiber network broadband we built. All these little circles are areas that we were awarded that thirty-three million dollars in Virginia to distribute capable fiber of the home, we have to build that in six years, okay? And so that shot clock started about three months ago, you can see we're right here in Brunswick County, it runs up right into Dinwiddie. This auction, it ended at, right at the beginning of two thousand and nineteen, there's another auction coming up in about a year. And then another one, about a year and a half afterwards, in the same place I'm in. I'll show you the opportunity. We are acquiring another convenient asset in this region, so this will be our tower coverage, current potential. So my point of, of what I'm trying to make here, is basically, we're committed to this region, to this area, okay? We take ourselves in North Carolina and heavily invest in rural Virginia, just because there's a need here. There's the same need that's in Virginia that's there is in North Carolina, it's just the funding is ahead of the curve than where we are in North Carolina. We want some of that money in the auction in North Carolina, but it's just very small pieces. In Virginia, there was large areas, the way to make that work is large areas, so we're identifying areas right now in Virginia where we can get in the next auction in North Carolina, okay? And so, this is a wireless project, we're working out on the interbanks, accounting to give us access to the tower. It's right out here in this place called Ingleheart, not a lot out there, they run service, working with the local electric cooperative to get fiber access to the tower, we're putting on employees. So this is a micro example of what we're doing, okay? You have to fire the tower, light the tower, get some coverage, and then you, this is work, I say. And so, I'm gonna show you sort of how these projects sort of take life. This is our network with the electric, it's very hard to see, but in long and short, we actually worked in partnership with the electric, the copper association in Carolina. So they put out a proposal to work with providers, they vetted us over a year, selected us to one day we use their assets. And so how we partner with counties, municipalities, is if a county has a tower or a water tank, okay, or land that we can use, it just makes sense to partner with us, let's shoot. Instead of us building a tower, building our own assets. The electric cooperatives, they're putting fiber to a lot of our substations, and they have a lot of tower assets, they have land you can put remotes on. It's a natural partnership, they're rural companies, there's twenty-six of them in North Carolina, there's about thirteen we wanna work with. We have four pilot projects, the one I just showed you out in the Outer Banks is one, we've got another one I'm gonna highlight here in a minute. We already have four towers that were already lit, three more. But these are the types of things that we look at, to solve this rural accessibility crisis, we all have to work together. How we look at these things on county-by-county basis, that's how decisions are made, okay? Local government, investments are made that way. So it's like, what counties we wanna look at, partner with, who's engaged? Some counties have broadband committees, there's citizens that are so upset and concerned, they wanna get together and pressure on local officials. Some counties put together RFPs, so here's what we have, that's what's happening in this case, that's what attracts us. And then, not just that, they put money on it, and go out and get funding, and that's what's great about this project, and the Dinwiddie counties got together. So here's our assets, we're gonna put up some money, they got some money from the tax, tobacco commission, and then we're putting up our own money as well, that's how serious we are. It's the only way to solve this problem, okay? And so this is a perfect opportunity for us. A little bit about our company, we offer phone, this is the expert on this, internet, TV, and we offer security systems, okay? We only offer TV on fiber, we don't do it on wireless, we started doing it on copper, it doesn't work, okay, it's just IP TV. But what we are, I told you, we, we, we transform ourselves from a telephone company, a phone company, a broadband company. So we have, as of three years ago, about eight thousand broadband customers, we're now sixteen thousand as of last year, we doubled the size of our company. Our projections for our broadband growth is, we get to thirty-two thousand by twenty-twenty, so we'll double it, or triple the size of the company, we'll double again. And so, we think we're gonna add another thirty thousand in there in about a year, that's the kind of goal we're following. So we're seriously committed to doing this, what we did with River Street is to create, and it really is in Wilkes, a home base, to do all the tech support, engineering, and marketing, all the things to support these networks, okay? So what you really get out here are a bunch of technicians working in the area, okay? And making it work, we support it all from Wilkes, if that makes sense? That's how you can do this efficiently, okay? So we're trying to make sure that because we're member-owned, everything we do, we're trying to keep in mind that we are behold, it's their money, it's public money, it's your money. How do we do this efficiently and affordably as possible, okay? And that's how we try to keep our rates low, alright? That's our retirement, and we haven't raised rates in, I don't have any years, but all we're doing is throwing stuff in, okay? So we used to take that in charge of much things, I'll talk about that. Just briefly, as far as where we stand, as far as total network providers in the country, size-wise, we're number one twenty-two, okay? There's a large drop-off to the Verizon's, AT&amp;T's, everybody else, but we are still a very small company, don't lose, don't lose our identity as a co-op. We are a flying, I mean, a gnat on a fly of an elephant's tail, if that makes sense? So, we're not, we do not have illusions of brand, but we wanna, we wanna, you know, debar the. Fiber of the home provides, we're number sixty-nine in the country, and other wireless acquisitions will be number one hundred and three, so we're top seven percent of most companies. So we feel like, you know, we're here, we've been around for sixty-eight years, and we're in a good place. So this isn't just, hey, here we are, and we're leaving, this is a long-term investment for us, this project is a three-year project, it's not just a three-year project, this is a ten to twenty-year marriage. I shouldn't say that, this marriage should end, but I'll say it. It, it's a twenty-year relationship, let's put it that way, because these networks take me long times to build, okay? So we're here for the long run, so make sure you're present. A little bit of our customer service and support, I mentioned we do all this from Wilkes, we track everything, and we look at it on a quarterly basis. We do surveys every six months, our average, full times are three minutes and two and a half minutes, our average calls are three and a half minutes. The number here, you probably, it's hard to see, what we try to do is make sure when you call us, we try to make sure your problem is fixed the first time you call, it's called first call resolution. And so how we set our network up is we try to make sure that we can tunnel into your router, or your service, and we can do it without having to send somebody out there, okay? And try to finish that issue within three, five minutes, that's our goal, if we can't, so we can do that seventy-six percent of the time. If we can't do it, we'll send a person out to your house, in a truck, okay? These guys are really good at what they do, I'll show you the survey, it looks and say. Our review features on copper, this is when you have a problem, you have to send somebody out, ten percent of the time, we have to send somebody back to home. On fiber, it's less than four percent, fiber is a lot better than, okay? I don't have these numbers for wireless, but I think they're probably along the lines of copper. This is a survey, an industry survey, and we do this every six months, it's called a net promoter score. So this is, if you survey your customers, how likely are they to recommend you to somebody else, okay? That's, that tells all. And so, we do, they freak out, there's customer service, so that's when you call on the phone and talk to someone about getting new service, so I've got a billing issue or a problem. It's on repair, that's the guys, I was talking about coming to the house, right? They're gonna fix something, and then you got tech support, that's when you have a problem technically, and you call tech support, team, okay? They're all ninety-seven percent, our guys that go on the house, a hundred percent, it's almost on repeat, alright? All we ask them is, come over this mile, home leave till it's fixed, make sure they know it's going well, put your boots on, and don't knock anything away, they're really good at what they do, okay? And they look at the communities that they work in, we only hire local people, so they're gonna be people you would know, okay? You probably know the TDS guy, you're a TDS customer. You probably know the TES guy, if you're a TES customer. Our best employees in the area from TES are those guys being parents. They know everybody. Our guys are, they live, they lived in the communities of these people. Our likelihood to recommend on customer service is 88%. Inslement repairs, 90%. Tech support is 88%. Being close to 90% is almost unheard of. The large guys are in the cities. Okay? So we're very, we're very proud of these owners, homely proud, I'd say. But it's something we want to keep as highly as possible. So this we should... Well, our churn rate is less than 8%. So we have people in our network that usually don't need it. We don't break even on a customer until about a year and a half in. On wireless, it's about two years. Okay? So we don't make the first penny on someone when they sign on. It takes that long. So our goal is trying to keep you for at least more than two years, hopefully five, 10, 15 years. We've got some people in customers for four years. Right? We're very, we're very content aware of trying to make sure we keep people happy. Okay? How you do that? Great support, great customer service, and affordable pricing. All right? You understand what I'm saying? So this project in particular, it's a partnership that affiliate Dinwiddie County. This is, this map's not showing up, but it really shows the competitors. So in a nutshell, I'll just tell you. Here you have TES. In Dinwiddie, you have, and you have some cable coverage here from Comcast. In Dinwiddie, you just have cable down 85. Again, you're huge. The rest of this, so this copper here, it's mostly copper in Dinwiddie. These networks are not built. Okay? It was not for you. Uh, this map's not showing up very well, but the FCC has mapping. And it shows where there's 25 and 3 and where there's not. And almost the entire area of Amelia and Dinwiddie is not at all. And, and what's almost more disturbing about that statistic of the mapping from the FCC is these maps are incorrect. The maps they use to tell you where you have broadband are faulty because all these companies have to do is say that you can provide service to one customer in one census block and get them in 10 days. And so they may just be right over there in the census block. The other 200 people have to, most likely serve. This is a problem, hope you have it. And so right now, the FCC is spending a bunch of money. That's just, this, this next map, hard to see. They're giving money to companies just to get their networks taken care of. It's a waste of money. It's extra rent, I think. And, and so that program's running out. So they're going to redistribute that money for fiber-to-home projects. Okay? And so they have to get the maps right. So the first auction I mentioned is going to be where the maps say no one has service. There's no dispute. The second option is we're going to fix the maps. So off the property that we own in Pennsylvania County, we volunteered to be part of a federal FCC mapping project. There's two of them going on. Um, there's two companies that are bidding to correct these maps. What they found in Virginia was a 30% error rate. So it's pretty obvious here there's going to be coverage. But in the entire state, 30% of the people that the FCC thinks have 25 and 3, that's pretty, there's a problem. They're trying to get that first. This is where we won that, that federal funding. It puts up right against part of this project. A local electric cooperative, this is the closest, I believe, that you award, uh, pretty short, electric one in these areas and part of Brunswick County since that was planned. But if you open the mapping, almost all of, of Dinwiddie is available and most of Amelia because it's unserved. So this project in particular, what the counties pulled together was 3.4 million dollars. Okay? Amelia is contributing $683,000. Dinwiddie's contributing $1 million. They both went together, applied to the tobacco commission to get 1.7 million dollars. So they came to the table with their offer, which tried to entice companies to take on this project, was 3.4 million dollars. We gave 4.1 million dollars to this project. That's because what we're planning on doing with that is in wireless, you have towers, you got to have fiber. Wireless doesn't work without wires. You don't have fiber, the tower's not going to work. So we don't know where to replace the towers yet, but we got to get fiber. Okay? And so how we split that money out, it's, it doesn't have that much to do with the same ratio. It's going to put it wherever we need it. Okay? The, the whole project is about 4.4 million dollars. You can do a lot of damage with that in the wireless. Can't do a lot of fiber destruction with it. And so that's a pretty good chunk of money for this project. And Amelia, we're doing three towers. And Dinwiddie, we're doing four to start. This is a map of, this came from the state of Virginia of who has 25 and 3 and who doesn't. So in Amelia, these light green areas are where there's definitely no service. So how we planned our proposal was using the mapping. Now, the maps are wrong, but this is all we have to go by. Okay? We're going to, we're going to gauge demand. So we're going to show you a website that they have. You can do a speed test and tell us what your speed's on. So just because it says you have 25 and 3, you're going with it. You can tell us with a speed test. All right? It'll automatically take that information on your information. Well, no, I'm going to do a form one. I'm right in the middle of an air that's on this map that says you have 25 and 3. That's the whole problem with the entire country right now. If these are here, this is how we determine what's served and unserved. Okay? This is the proposed tower coverage in Amelia right now and Dinwiddie based on those maps. This is a conceptual map. This was put in our proposal. This does not mean this is where the towers are going to be. Okay? This was, you put up a wireless tower, you get a signal three or five miles. Put it, here's where we put the tower. Here's a three or five mile coverage area. That's a conceptual map of how you cover the most people. That may not be in practice what we do. It all depends on the topography. Where's the best place to put a tower? And plus, who really wants it? So we, we're surveying the public. We already have 200 people in, in, uh, Dinwiddie, I think, 100 people. Post 100 people already signed up here in Amelia. I think that's 100. And so that's, that'll start to, you know, tick off. And people will tell us where to go. Okay? Where I put a tower, if nobody wants it, there's a whole bunch of cluster of people that need it. We'll try to figure it out. Okay? So this is what the proposal, this is public record. But I just want you to know that this is something that is, is fluctuating and changing. All right? An example of this project. So we're working on a project in Percy County, North Carolina. It's a partnership with an electric co-op that has fiber, at least one tower. The county had put out a proposal to do a wireless project just like this. So Percy County is right below, it's on the Virginia State line, toward the end. Okay? Very rural, North Carolina town. It's like most counties. You have a county seat in the middle, a little bit of some cable company stuff, and the rest of the county is unserved. Very rural. It's almost exactly like this here. And so the county put out an RFP, a wireless project, to do four towers. They put up two. So there's four towers and four quadrants of the county. We bid on it. We lost it to a company called North Carolina Wireless. And they were so good at it, we went and we made it offer five of these guys in her number. We, we, we said, do fiber. We said, wait a minute, let's do fiber. And it was too expensive. So they, they went wireless. Um, so that project, this is the county. It's right here. The four towers, original towers, and the county project, very similar to this project, where it's just county-only money over these four towers. And then we applied together. We have a state grant fund for broadband, just like Virginia. Virginia has a daddy fund, we have some other things to raise for real. We put in a $3 million project for, I think it was 506 locations. We got challenged by CenturyLink, which is the carrier Verizon, and Spectrum, which is like Comcast. They basically said, hey, wait a minute, we have one customer in the census block. We can't, can't build it. And, and so that $3 million project went to a $1 million project to build three more towers. And so this is a perfect example of what we're trying to do here. County funding, grant funding, partnership with the county using their towers, partnership with the electric using their fiber, everyone working together. Okay? So we've done this. This is the perfect model of what we're going to do here. Okay? This is that fiber project we was talking about over here. There's a little electric close by. We did win some federal funding. We built the backbone there. Five, two, we're going to have a wireless backbone. Okay? So same result, you stay 25 and 3. Long-term, when it gets to power. This is an example of the coverage of the four towers, the three to five mile radius. Uh, the first county project was for 10 months. Those, those circles are much larger. When we did the, the state grant project, we did 25 and 3. This is an example of the coverage ratio. And in the system that shows the coverage, this is kind of from our, our operational department, all these Xs or green or Wi-Fi symbols, and they're hard to see, are people that called in requesting service. There's a huge amount of demand in this county for broadband. What's ironic is there's a bunch of people in the middle of this county in that county seat that have cable that want service too. It's kind of crazy. It's because of the price. Okay? We're getting from pricing on that. So while we can track, do you want service or not in our, in our operational system, what I'm going to show you next is a way of how we track demand for our marketing. Okay? And this is worked out very well. So marketing, we have a whole marketing, uh, campaign, products, and billboards, radio spots, press releases, door handlers, the red mail, all kinds of stuff. So we, when we start having a presence here, start moving in, you'll, you'll know who we're treating. Okay? We do come pretty obvious. This is our current pricing on fiber. $75 for 100 up, 100 down. It includes voice, free wireless broadband, and pre-tax support, no contract, no isolation fee. You're good to go. If you take our co-op discount, you get this for as low as $70. If you're a low income, you qualify for the lifeline programs, low-income program, the school system, much. You need it for instant fee, $1.50. That's a really good deal. It's on fiber. This is hard to see, but how we came up with our pricing, especially for this project, by density, is came from a, a website called Broadband Down. And those popular areas of the country, you can get 25 and 3 for $49.99. Okay? And the most rural areas, $65. Is that fair? I don't think so. So that's why we try to get your price on, on 25. That's on wireless. So this is our fiber pricing that I just mentioned. $70 for 100 by 100, 60, 75, a low income. You gather, our co-op discount, 25 and 3 for $45. Up to 25 and 3. What I want to say, up to, is that wireless is the best effort service. Okay? It's not like we send you a signal and it's going to be the same speed all the time. We'll go to your house. Well, we'll put up a tower and then we can tell sometimes if it's a go or no-go decision, you can call in just for that information I showed you. Or we'll just say we just can't do it. If it's iffy, come out to your house. We bring one of these devices. This is, this is inside your house. This is called CPD, Customer Privacy Equipment. Okay? To test the signal and tell you ahead of time. We can get you four and one, 10 and one. Hey, 25 and 3, guess what? We can see the tower is a great signal. We can get you 50 and 3. It just depends. Okay? But the price is the same for up to 25 and 3. We can get you up to 50 and 3 is the same. But we're going to tell you upfront, do a speed test. This is what we can get. Here's the price. Do you want it or not? Compare it to whatever you're paying. You can give them MiFi. You can compare it to that. Uh, if you don't like it, there's no contract. You just call us and tell us. I don't, I don't want it. No penalty. Okay? We don't offer contracts. The only thing we offer contracts on is TV. We don't make money on TV. There's never a break even on TV service. We're so small, the, the, the cost of programming is more than what we charge for the service. We do it because we're a co-op, our people on TV. And there's one thing that's a contract. So low income, you get this for as low as $35, $75. Uh, but $45 is the baseline for 25 and 3. The next year, anything above 25 and 3, between 50 and 3 is $70. Okay? So, uh, we feel that's highly competitive. And I don't know if anyone else is going to make that cheap. The companies we acquire, the companies we purchase are not good with anywhere in the country. I think they think that. There's only a few that can get one. This is some more of our marketing, um, billboards, radio. This is our website. And so how we track who's interested in the service is extremely important for us to make a decision on where to spend money. Um, and we try to be very careful on how we spend money, deploy assets. We create a website that's called JoinUpBuildRiverStreetMask. Okay? Type in .com, it'll still work, but the same website. This is where you put your information. This is where you put your information. So it's hard to see, you can put your address in here, and we have service where you are, and they'll tell you, you have service, great, something we can sign you up. If you don't, and you're in an area that we're looking at providing service, like these two counties, then we'll take your information. You put your physical address in there, your name, your phone number if you have one, and your email address is probably the most important. I know if you don't have internet, that's what your email address is. If somebody that you know has internet, we can get in contact, let you know, hey, we're coming, we're getting close, okay? And so what this does, it takes information and maps it out, and then we can see who wants where. All right? And so it'll become pretty obvious, pretty quick, where the people want the service. That's what we found in all these projects that we've started, okay? This is the way we do it. This map, hard to see, if you go to it and click on the top service area, you'll see all the areas in green that already shows you that we have service. What's also on there in blue is everywhere that we're looking at. A million didn't want to be on that map. All of the areas in Virginia where we've already won funding are on that map. There's clusters in North Carolina that are on that map. So anywhere we already have service, any place around it is a place we're looking at providing service. Expansion. And so this is definitely in play. This is a blowout of what we're going to do with your county, it's hard to see, it's too big. We did the same thing for Wilkes County, we had over fifteen hundred people that can get four hundred minutes, tell us they want our service. Isn't that great? It's our price, okay? This is the areas, so behind the scenes in our dashboard, these are all the areas reflecting interest rate. Okay, they're outlined in the video. So we're tracking in every single one of these places, are you interested in taking our service? Some of them are actively marketing, some of them are not. We haven't even started here in this project, we're already four percent interested. And I say four percent, four percent of what we require to build fiber. So our average requirement to build fiber in an area is forty percent of the people telling us they want the service. So that four percent isn't whether we build wireless or not. That's whether we build fiber. My guarantee fiber, that's a great start, okay? This dashboard, it's hard to see, but it tracks leads, contacts. If you go in that's in our system, you've got all your information in, you can tell us what you want, that's called work. You don't have to sign up, you're letting us know, hey, I'm just interested, this is what I want. A lead is you just go in there and put your contact. So we track both. In the system, we can track how many emails we send to people, we send updates on projects. So if you go to your monitors, we're not going to send emails every day. We're not going to bug you to death. But what we're going to do is when it gets close to, hey, we're getting serious about serving you, we're going to let them know. Probably go over an area, postcards, say, guess what? We're coming around, you guys say you're interested, and let's play ball, okay? And so we're not asking you to sign up ahead of time. I think we had six hundred, three hundred and eighty last month. That's pretty good. This site is just from these meetings, okay? If we do an active marketing campaign, you'll see that go up. And so we kind of know what works to move the dial to get people to us. We track everything. This is the areas that we're talking about right here. Every one of these dots, the green dot is order, the blue dots lead. We haven't even got started yet. We already have over two hundred, I think there was over thirty last night, and then we are close to a hundred. So each one of those dots, if you click on it, it says, this is Mr. So-and-so, Mrs. So-and-so, here's my address, email address, this is one other. And it's made really easy to say, this person wants twenty-five and three, it's forty-five bucks. We have a hundred of these people in this cluster, they really want it, that's what it's out of. It's kind of, I know it sounds too easy. But anyway, this is how we track. So it's very important for you, if you're interested, to put your information in here. If you're really interested, you can become what's called a champion. You get all your neighbors to sign up, have them look here. So a couple examples, we have fiber in Stokes County, in North Carolina where we built. We had it built off the road, just fifteen houses off this road, at least one guy went and got all his names signed. So they're in our budget for next year, put fiber down there. Another lady went, and I think, I have a hundred and fifteen people, they got a hundred of them, sign up here. And you can tell. That's the kind of things that move the needle, if that makes sense, okay? When this really starts to take light is when you put up a tower and the people on your neighbors start having services, it's really good. Anyway, we started putting fiber around Wilkes. When you start putting fiber, you start, you see a cloud going down the road, the problem is, it's about a year and a half, two years after that cloud comes by to get service, everybody was screaming for it, everybody wanted it then. In fact, we started marketing saying, do you want fiber? No one knew what fiber was, they thought we were something laxatives, like. Marketing mistake. Do you remember that? Yeah, that was pretty embarrassing. But anyway, it's a little bit long. But this is how we do this. So I know it sounds simple, but we'll probably come back and really do some marketing once we have some service up, and you'll see, and we'll get some of your neighbors. We have our production studio, we have some videos together, do some testimonials. But the wireless is, once you put it up there, it's working, you can start it. And so we're hoping that based on everything that lines up, it looks like this is a really good opportunity to service. This is, if you go on the site, you can see, they'll have like a United Way drive or a blood drive, they'll kind of show you the progress. So the first, Amelia's the first one on there, we're already four percent. So you can just track it that way. We don't share your information, your address, your email, anybody, we don't sell it. We just don't do that. We have a lot of rules and regulations, one, keeping your information secure, but we don't keep your information. It's precious to us, it's gold. These are the two websites, one dot RiverStreet.net, or one dot RiverStreet.com. If you get to the site and you have problems down there, you can call us, we'll help you. If you don't have internet and can't input the information, call our office, we'll do a point for you, okay? That's where you go. You put your information there, get your neighbors moving there, don't worry about it. The only way we know is that information is the key there, okay? And so the beauty of our electric partnerships is they know everybody, they endorse us as their members. All of a sudden, I'm ready to go to this website, okay? So we don't have that luxury here, but that's what's happening in North Carolina, okay? And so as a co-op, we have the value being, so. Questions? You didn't have any questions while I was talking? Last night, you were getting zingers. Yeah?
I have two. We're used to when new people kick up the starters, we just have to suck it up and lose power. How does the fiber network work? Do you build and build and build, do you have to come over?
Lose power?
Yeah.
Oh, are you a wireless customer?
I don't believe I, I don't know.
Who's your service provider?
TDS.
Oh, you lose power?
Yes. They say, when you have neighbors coming in, it's just like, yeah, we're using.
You're on DSL. And so how DSL works, it's a shared system, okay? So if you don't have enough equipment, you don't have to abandon it. Every time you add something, it slows down. In fact, you probably know this, five in the afternoon, or nine o'clock at night, it's ever on. You get on at three in the morning, hey, it's a little faster. It's an outdated technology that's worth it. Cable's the same way, older cable systems, the exact same way, it's a shared network. And so the beauty of fiber is your throughput is going to be a lot more, okay? When you add people to our wireless network, and do that wirelessly, what we do is put more equipment on. Is that how it's done? Have you seen that?
Yeah, you know, over subscription is a norm of the industry, however, with the fixed wireless equipment, we have the ability through a couple of different methods at the tower side, to actually put more hardware to manage capacity. And we typically will take those, we call them EODs or access points, and we direct those where the demand is, so we can actually point those. We can change channel widths, so it's produce more capacity on the hardware, and add hardware pretty easily. It's a lot easier than, you know, going and replacing hundreds of miles of cable lines and all that kind of stuff.
So it's a matter of us just monitoring the equipment and making sure we have more. We try to eliminate the most obvious problems, the wireless is proper. One, you have to have a big enough pipe of the internet to get your several water hoses. If the TDS pipe, knowing that we bought a TDS, if the pipe's too small, only so much water's in it. So one, you have to have a big enough pipe, that's one problem. The second is, if your line's proper, the longer, the farther you go out, the less you get. So if you're closer to the remote, if you're a little bit higher speed, you're farther out you go. So in our network, what happened was, we went and we shortened those loop lines for all of our customers. We put up, I think, eighty-eight separate buildings just to get closer out there far when we were building our Wilkes County. Okay? TDS hasn't done that. First thing we did when we purchased the copper TDS properties, one, was make that pipe of internet a lot bigger, make more than just one. So if there's one and it gets cut, done. So there's certain ways you can operate a network, and certain ways you're not. I'm not questioning what they're doing, we just do things a little differently, okay? Because it's down to money. You want to pay more for that big pipe, you want to pay more to extend your network? And so right now, I know TDS is getting money to operate their network, but it's very small pieces, all right?
My second question was, in trying to find your website?
Yeah.
I've been on three times, it's funny, I'm successfully, because there's a lot of River Street options.
Well, there's FindRiverStreet.net.
Yes.
I know there's a River Street out in California, it's production studio.
Production, yeah, I've got one installed, and it's here. Will you be able to handle people that are not savvy or savvy as customers on the internet to deal with you, because they don't want to do it?
Most, our average age of our customer is fifty-five to seventy-five years old. We don't have to walk them through. So we're a real company, most of our customers are older.
Are you just saying?
I'm just, we're in a big house, I wish it was a church, I swear. It's true. I'm not joking, that's our wheelhouse. You think, it sounds crazy, because we like people that are fifty-five to seventy-five years old that pay their bill, they just want it to work, they don't want to feel like they're getting overcharged. Is that simple? Yes?
All right, so for your wireless, what frequency range is it from? The reason I'm asking that is because our church, we just have to buy all new wireless microphones, because T-Mobile bought the frequency that we have. So all the churches have joy, a few three thousand dollar microphone, because all of our table book disciples.
Right. So we use five, two thousand four, three thousand six five. We were using nine hundred in certain areas, so for instance, in L D, North Carolina, we're using nine hundred. The local library has power years that use nine hundred, and now it's interfering with each other, right? So I can't speak to the specific system we're using, but I'm not sure if it's.
No, I mean, one thing that's for sure is, you know, over time, the rules EFCC applies, they change. The world changes, the environment changes. But the frequencies we would deploy are typically very safe frequencies that are managed by EFCC and have a roadmap or a future. You know, obviously, we wouldn't go out and invest money in a band that we would expect to be sunsetting pretty soon. But that does happen sometimes, you know, they repackage bands, and that sounds like what I heard there.
I think they've got everything from six, six hundred to six thirty or something.
They just won that at the auction. EFCC auctioned seven hundred or something.
They have the small churches that don't have two, three thousand dollars to be had.
We tried to get a six hundred megahertz auction out in the Albert Banks, and it was nine pounds. And we had too many available for that, and what blew it up, what's was it? Great, was it Greenbill?
Greenbill, thank you.
They all care about Greenbill, and all of our guys want that. So T-Mobile's a big one, and Verizon, and so forth. That's really the factor. It's not secondhand.
Well, the problem, the workforce we're going to use here in this environment is going to be the three-five band, it's a brand new band that was owned by C P R S. It's recently repackaged and a hundred megahertz added to an existing fifty megahertz, particularly for rural, rural band use. And that, the rules affecting that go into place in April of 2020. So I think the future of that band is pretty solid, and it's actually one of the first dynamic GPS ran databases EFCC has used in a band, and that would be the, really the future perspective used, the spectrum sharing for the future, you know, lots of other countries doing it, it's a new endeavor for the FCC.
They're selling those licenses, and we're going to participate in that auction, you know. Thing is, it's on Horizon, but it's spectrum that no one else can get an option, and it's hard for you to get it. So we want to win that option, we want to decide where we're going to get it on, so a million didn't have this choice. But one, they've lost it all, and two, you have that equipment that works best for that. Okay, so if we own it, great, then we have to do each other's equipment we can use. But long term, that's going to be our wireless, our preferred wireless. Right now, we have three or six, or five licenses, but you can have interference, you can kick somebody out. The other stuff is the can interference, so something on your mind.
If I may, Eric, let me ask the participants a question. We've talked a lot about speeds today, ten megabits down, one megabit up, twenty-five down, three up. Do you know what it takes to download a movie without buffering? What the, do you know what that is? It helps me, I think, relate it to people when they're asking, what does this mean? What does a twenty-five dot three mean? If you can push it out there, or even five meg, ten meg? So anybody have experience of downloading movies without buffering? Are you able to do it on the TDS?
Really slow.
You get the buffering, right?
Yes.
So if we have customers, wireless customers, Josh and I are a part of that River Street block, we have customers in neighboring counties that are downloading movies without buffering at three to five meg. So twenty-five meg should be very sufficient. If we get ten mags, it should really be a real boost for you to download movies for single users. Now, if you've got teenagers in the home, you've got multiple users, then that fifteen to ten mags would be fine. So if you need about seven or eight mags to kick it off, so it doesn't take forever to download, then you need about five to six minutes to get the device, you don't get the buffering. So I wanted to put that in context for you, so you can help understand what this speed discussion is all about, and why it's important that we push as much out as we can, but if you get ten and one, you're going to be way ahead of where you are now. Does that make sense?
That's very important. But not all ten and one's great equal. By ten and one, you mean ten one, but your life has to grow, doesn't support ten one, it's not going to be a facility. Anyway, yes, sir?
Hi, yes, sir. My name is Wendy. I want to, first of all, thank you for the good presentation. I like the fact that you're talking about broadband should be a utility. I've lived in South America and in Africa where wireless is the utility, is the only way, and I was moved here in May and was shocked that I was not able to have connectivity. Yes, that I'm being provided a house with no connectivity. But I wanted to know, and try to understand, because I think Joshua forgot the name right, had mentioned that you're fixed wireless, and if I recall correctly, in this initial project for the next three years, your objective is three towers.
Well, actually, it's ninety-five percent of a signal. We want to skip our requirements, it's ninety-five percent of the survey.
So are you going to also be in the existing cellular tower structure for your antennas? Are you piggybacking on like a L T X? I'm curious, because I don't have cell reception. I live at my house, I'm a half a mile away, so I have to drive for everything.
I understand.
So if you could just expand a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
I'll talk on that, thank you for your comments. So just to talk about the wireless dynamic, and why you don't have it here, so you're wonderful, I don't have Verizon, I don't have AT&amp;T. We own a wireless company. We, in terms of co-ops, built a wireless company to serve the rural parts of seven counties that didn't have it. And so if we hadn't created that company, there wouldn't be any wireless coverage in our rural areas of our county either. And I'll explain sort of how, that are our biggest customer. Our second biggest customer is AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T has some rural towers, not everywhere. Verizon, who roams on our network, they only cared about having towers on the highway. They said, we don't, if we want to roam on your network, and you can roam Nation One, how we do Nation One roamies with this, we don't get the crap, but anybody out in rural areas, there's not enough of them, they don't pay enough. We just want to make sure when people are driving down that road, that they're in our tower, we get roaming them. So they make a lot of their money off people just roaming on the network, not on what people pay them for money. It's all about the dollar, it's all they care about. And so that's why we built our wireless company. And so we have, we own nine towers of our own in Wilkes. Our wireless company, I think in our own county, has, I think, thirty, right? There are places that no one else would build one, but they couldn't get a signal, all right? We serve those towers, we have fiber for a single one. Wireless doesn't work without wires, right? And so the towers that are used for mobile access, because they make their money off of roaming, they usually charge anywhere from twenty-five hundred, and in some cases, six thousand dollars a month. There's like four major tower providers in the entire country that markets monopolize. So American Towers, one, Crown Castle, SBA's another one. They make their money off of Horizons and AT&amp;Ts of the world. If we're trying to do this project, one, we're not making money off of roaming, we're trying to make it off of people that are there. We can't afford to get on those towers of the world, okay? Different business model, it's a different type of environment, it's mobile, large carrier mobile. We talked to American Tower about, they have a program for small WISPs, that's what we're doing here as a wireless center, so this is where they're at. Their offer was, when you go down the tower, there's a lot of costs associated. You have to do an engineering study, a load study, all kinds of different things. If you're building one, it's even more complicated. So there was like, I think, a minimum of two thousand, three thousand dollar fee, just to save this power rate, it's a good amount. And next, then per month, they're charging about six hundred fifty dollars. But you have to have a minimum of twenty-five thousand. So even six hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, six fifty, is still tough to make this work, okay? So in our, we're building our own towers. When I say a tower, we don't necessarily have to use a tower by the service. You can have a tower like you see with guide wires, you can have a tower that looks like a cell phone tower, you can have a tower that's like a pole, you're seeing some of those? You can have a wooden pole. You can use a water tank, you can use a rainwater. You can use someone's house that's on a ridge, leave it down to somebody else, and you can be into someone else's house and create your own network. So these are all access points. And so if you think about wireless, the wireless that we're talking about, it's more of a niche of a bunch of different things, okay? And so how we make that work is, there's demand there, we're trying to figure it out. So I think in one county, we're setting sixty-foot wooden poles, we've never done that before, but we're trying. You can set up a monopole, a little bit of farm, a small WISP, and you help some more come on, and they can put up a tower in two weeks, three thousand dollars. It blew my mind, but you got to get the land, okay? You got to make sure, you know, people, you hear you're coming to town, and all of a sudden, a piece of land, what it cost you a thousand bucks, now it's twenty-three. So it's just, it's a different, it's a completely different model, if that makes sense. So in underdeveloped countries like you're talking about, and in Europe, wireless is the prevalent technology, because they didn't have the copper and electric infrastructure that was built in nineteen fifty-one. So if you were starting from scratch, you'd probably get all the stuff. But it's not the end-all, be-all for everything. The FCC has said, like I said before, satellites are option, okay? So what we're trying to do here is get ninety-five percent of the people that don't have service a signal, and then we're going to try to make sure that when we go out there, the signal can get to you, there's a block by train, there's a good amount, based on distance, it could be three miles, it's better, five miles, it's not. We're going to tell you, hey, this is the signal condition. You get your ten and one, you screen some video, it's pretty cool. If you've got three kids and I want to watch video, you know, I don't know about you, most households that have kids have like seven devices. You've got smartphones, you've got two smart TVs, you've got laptops, you want, before you know, and you have all these other devices that are paying, you're never going to need them. They have light bulbs now that are actually Wi-Fi. It's crazy. And so the world is, it's the internet of things, right? Whether you're running a house, you buy a new refrigerator, you don't even know it, but it's on your internet. Trying to tell the grocery store what groceries you want. Whole foods, depends on. If you have an Alexa, all right? So anyway, the basics of what we're talking about here is, who's on the server, can we get you a signal, how strong is that signal? Let's try to solve this accessibility problem. We think we're the affordability department, kind of, kind of good. But the true way to solve a problem is probably, would be, did I answer your question?
I answered it, I was just pleased to hear that. It's going to rely on these self-powered constructions.
We can't make that model work. So what we're trying to do is, we put towers that county has, or access points that we can use that are already there, where can we put assets that are sufficiently to do with a couple of nice amount of people, it's a decent amount of pressure. If we go to your home and want to use as an access point, we probably increase it. Because all we're doing is, we're taking your home that may have really good signals to somebody else, and then using you as a tower. That's how you do it, okay?
One more layer to that, we're going to address the broadband issue, not the LTE phone problem.
I mean, I understand that, but I went through the whole gamut, I lost my job, because I couldn't handle the whole of the weekend. And so the satellite wouldn't work, because satellites were oversaturated. I had gone through a couple of different cell providers, you know, would get a little bit of data for the cat off. And it depends on where you are in the house, you're on a roam, I can get one bar, so the other room is no. And then I looked at ATX, which was fine, but it's still on the existing cell tower. Still, even though there's a line to sign, and it is for a while, I'm still not dependent on the existing cell tower construction. And I was pleased, but I just want to clarify, I'm gonna make an assumption that you're going after what seems to be the smart decision in a microenvironment, or getting a signal help. And I just wanted to clarify, not make an assumption.
Okay. Yeah, there's a different way to solve a whole problem.
And here, we have a question here.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just gonna ask, since it is a dual wireless network setup, are we going to have, or basically adding?
You initially, primarily, it's that, but if someone needs a static IP, it's five dollars a month.
I was just curious, because I work from home today, and I'm not networking here, so I just like to set phone from my house. In my office, and the status, you know, affects a lot of users. Also, what are you guys planning to do about your edges to the sharing? Sharing the same edge that would be counting, so a lot of the population has to feed the same?
No, you will end up, there's different connections, middle-aged broadband communities. Even TDS, if they sold us a link, let's say we need a fiber bank link out to the internet, we could do that. Our goal is, this is a hybrid solution of fiber and wireless. The county put up three point four million dollars, we put up a million of our homes, and a million of source of fiber construction between towers. So also, there's no doubt of the, to the public period internet. There'll be redundancy there. We're gonna have northbound and southbound, or at least two diverse paths that the towers together. Now, we're gonna, now, when our wireless data on our fiber gets cut, then the traffic can be routed. We're still working on that, as far as determining the derivatives for those connections. The next phase of this is, December, we have to have the implementation plan, the draft of that. And then it becomes official in February. And then this three-year project timeline, we would hope that the first customers we turn up to both a million and a million counties will be followers to say, "Of course, it's important." We would hope that six months, seven months from the time we sign the implementation plan, get going, that we will equip customers, so it'll incrementally increase volume.
Josh, face the color on the map, so I thought that, that I had done earlier.
Eric, I got another question, please, just. How do you experience data taps? A huge net, or a C, or a lot of blue, or a jet pack, or those kind of things? Do you experience data taps? We don't do data taps. We never believe in them, we just don't apply it. So you're able to download as much data as you'd like permanently, to affect your...
Yes, sir.
Couple of months ago, I had to do an acquired training for State Council. Service Director of Soil and Water. And so I went on one morning to do it. And anyway, after a while, I found out what was going on. There was no pictures, it was just text. It was, it was, it was so slow in download, that we'd go for almost thirty minutes before it would come back on. And so I said, "Well, I'm just..." I went on doing some other things, and I had to come back at that, at that time. It took me nine hours to do this required training, fresh training. It's, it's, it's...
Yep.
And so I went on and checked the download speed for point three one.
Yeah, that's less than dial-up, right?
I was gonna say, what you're, it sounds like what you're trying to do is what we used to do when you're gonna dial it. That's not, your DSL is...
But there's one, one question I do have. I reviewed in detail the seven proposals. There was one thing that was yours that I had to concern about. It said that you didn't know there might not be a good central location. And so the hours might be some from Denver.
That's the question.
And if that is the case, my concern is, our problem, part of our problem now is that we haven't been getting into the tower problem.
That will be the case. You'll have your own... There are ways, when you look at the maps.
Oh, it's a very...
So when you look at this, and you see Amelia's in Denver, it is possible, since these counties are so close together, that we could hit customers from Denver, but we could also hit customers from Amelia into Denver. These are gonna be separate, but there will be some overlap. We hope this blue fiber path is NBC fiber. We hope to have a connection in here from them, from their fiber offering, and also whoever the provider is here. And that way, you can have your own dedicated paths out of here. And we were constructing fibers to some of these towers. Fibers, what the backhaul will be, it's the best speeds, it's either gigabit or ten gigabit, rather than microwaving, part of those signals from the towers to each other for the backhaul. Sometimes it's, you can't avoid it. You have to have a way to connect the towers, and it's forty-five thousand dollars per mile, and construct the fiber. That's why we put a million dollars out, it's gonna cost a lot more if you're ready for that. And also is, in the future, if these, if this plays out the way we expect it to, we'll already have the fiber routing infrastructure in the ground, to be able to connect customers to the fiber in the areas where there's the most density and the lowest need. But I understand the concern, but that will be an issue. Amelia will have, be its own self-supported community, as will Denver. But there can be some overlaps where, because it only makes sense, if we have a tower here, and we can hit someone in Amelia, rather than serving them from here, we will do it from the Denver area of customers. Does that go back to the question?
Yes, I'm up there in New Orleans part.
Okay.
That was the reason for the, for the question. The only other thing I'm saying is, I hope that you all, after this presentation, I hope that you can still buy two gigas.
It's off the tape.
So, we need to ask employees, we're gonna open them. So, they should have sold to us one day. I thought you were gonna say the problem with the proposals with me.
All right, so, yes, sir?
So it's, Ross drove, point four million, you're certain ninety-five percent of my situation, then you're giving them the...
We're gonna get a signal to a decent.
Signals, and that'll get them up to, or should be down, as low as ten one to those nine five.
Whatever, whatever the best scheme we can get, it's the best method of service.
As opposed to fibers to a home, ballpark within a fifty, sixty million dollar project, that's not...
We don't know, is that... So, it just... Let me give you some insight on that. So incrementally, as Eric said, thirty percent of the customers, and in some counties we've looked at, is a forty million dollar project. Incrementally, to hook each customer up, is an additional one thousand five hundred dollars on the fiber offering network. Because that includes average of two hundred, three hundred foot fiber dropings cloud, devices that's on the side of the house, called a DED, or network interface device. Then the wireless router in the home, and also the light, and battery backup. So it's just shot fifteen hundred dollars. The incrementals that we spend on connecting the customer, we have four different examples of antenna here. Not all four of these are on your home, but one of them is wood, unless you just want all four to be wood. But, this is pretty cool. But anyway, the price incrementally is about two hundred and fifty dollars for those. So four point four million dollars will give us a signal out there. To be able to ingest it, that's incremental cost, and that comes out of our pocket. Okay? That's not money. There is some money from this grant that is associated with being able to buy CTE or customer premises equipment. But anything above and beyond what we're awarded in this grant, what we put up, is gonna come out of our own pockets incrementally with these customers up. Two hundred and fifty dollars versus fifteen hundred dollars, you can see why this is much easier to bring to market. All right?
Thanks. Yeah. All the hookups that does for jury decision and the equipment is on us. We never apply for grant on it, it's mostly, because you don't have any... There's a certain amount of money just to get out there. That's just... Each individual customer.
It's a good problem to have.
Just like I said, it takes a lot of... We're gonna really need to drill.
Yeah, we're used to doing this.
That's what we do. The toll for housing, both counties, go back to the... Two of them, they're all, we have to drill through that. But with these devices, we'll be on the outside of the home, and we will drill a small hole, maybe... Oh, we may not use that now.
No. But that's, that will be our signal, what's in seven. That's just a conceptual drawing. Everybody actually knows the towers. See, I see, I understand. This, this isn't sensible. Did you take this as... Everybody wants one of those little... This is what we put in the proposal, what we'll actually have in practice. Those two co-ops, everything else is for profit, we don't, we just keep running. Our goal is to turn and merge all these, it's a funding problem. Yeah, yeah. Well, they're basically not even funding. Wrong. So, but, writing is nice, writing is nice. So it's more of a legal thing, it's a counterpoint. Single, you would have a duty, right? So at some point, they have a problem that... The beauty that's not... I'm sorry, I was distracted with...
Can you go over the process of that?
Yeah, typically, when I go to a call, it's a halting service. There is... All here, a little more of that side effect, like where it's not in. That person on the map is not playing with us, he's in the picture. I think from the last one, it's dead, it's dead, it's dead, we know, or made pretty significant. We know it was a structural, it's on the side, or maybe it's on the outlet. But we know what, slip move, or a break, or a ground, or a... Or units that we know are sold, or a lift, or a... And they have a fucking truck, trying to, trying to... Here.
When you go to the site, when you go inside, it's a bit... That inside, the water, it's not... Now, if you go to the site, you go to the site. The door is open, it's kind of... It comes, it's very strange, like, it's very... It's all about the... Well, we got them, we're looking at them. The question, they'll... I mean, it's set up, and it's in the back, so... Then, we want to see the whole thing. Also, they will be, like, we need, for, for me, can't just... Very... Now, if you give us a link, you know, you're... You have to... Okay. We did, man, we have, well, possibly, on screen, right? Well, you... We're gonna do that, so... Oh, so... Not probably, but it's a good time to do this. But, that's the one, that's the... And then, first, that's for... If you like, um... One of the times, we were, um, helping, um, some people, um, um... And the problem was, whether, you know, it's... Probably, you know, half, or even, I'm like, um... But, we're, we're, we're... And you have, um, like, um, um... A lot of weird, um... Well, that's, um, we're, um, we're, um, we're, um, we're... Well, we could have done, um, this, right?